I apologize for the late start, we'll get started now. If I could call this meeting to order? If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The allegiance is to the United States of America. To the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I have five board members present. Stacy Riewell and Melissa Inger are absent tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Chad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero. On the consent agenda tonight, we have a check wire disbursement summary, the bank reconciliations. My mouth is dry. The bank reconciliation statements for February 2016 and March 2016. The school board minutes from the regular board meeting of April 11th, and the school board study session of April 25th. We have resignations, terminations, and renewals as follows. And the high school membership. And the last thing is the designated official for the access to the MD Secure website. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Ben, second?
Second.
By Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero. Moving on to the acceptance of gifts, we have none for tonight. And next up is Laker Pride. If Austin Kraft would please come up. Band directors Keith Kuhlmus and Justin Schram, and Hannah Irk.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure tonight to have the opportunity for us to be joined first by Austin, and Hannah in a while, and a couple of our band staff members as well. But to start out this evening, I want to share a little bit about an unbelievable, one unbelievable senior, and soon another, who has had unbelievable accomplishments. He was in a fifth grade classroom last Thursday, talking a little bit about being a composer, and what that means to be a composer, and why he enjoys it. And I'm sure the students, you were the star, and they were just looking up at you and hoping one day to be like you, Austin. I want to also read a list of accomplishments, and this is just a summary of accomplishments of the young man sitting next to me. He represented Prior Lake High School at Model UN in 2015-16, a distinguished board scholar, a national merit finalist, NPR Minnesota Varsity Showcase Composer for 2013 and 2016, NHS Secretary, a speech captain, section speech champion in poetry in 2015. He represented the speech at the state tournament both of the last two years. Also represented speech at the National Speech Tournament. It will be in June of 2016 All Conference for Speech. The Prior Lake High School Band President, the Prior Lake High School Drum Major, and he lettered in speech, theater, mock trial, eco-team, and band. And he's a composer. So right now, I am delighted to recognize a very talented senior from Prior Lake High School. And he's going to treat us to one of his pieces right now. Thank you very, very much. Would you like to add anything or share anything about the piece that you just played?
I would just like to clarify that that was not a piece that I composed. That was a piece by Strauss, that was a horn concerto.
That was beautiful. Thank you, and thank you for all you have given to our community, to our high school. We're really proud of you, best of luck to you. I would like to now ask two of our band directors, Mr. Justin Schram and Mr. Keith Kuhlmus, to come up with me, please. Come on up, gentlemen. So last week, we had the opportunity at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools to recognize and to thank all of our teachers for National Teacher Appreciation Day. And it's really exciting for me to have two teachers who, I think, represent very well the dedication and commitment of our teachers across the district. Not only, I think you two are probably two of the first staff that I met during marching band practice in July and August. And really fun to watch these two, both in class with students and on the football field with the marching band, and watch their dedication to really ensuring that kids grow, they come together, and it helps bring our mission, our school's mission, to life. So thank you. In addition, these two brave souls took a trip this winter with several of our band members. And I'm going to go ahead and let them tell a little bit about the trip. And really, the reason we're here is because of an amazing partnership that we've met with another, or that we've started with another community. So I'll let them tell a little bit more about it.
Great, thank you. And I guess just, you know, it started on the Thursday night. Friday morning in the wee hours, we met at the high school at, I think it was 1:00 AM? 2:00 AM? One of those. 1:00, well, one of, very, 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 it was, it was too early to call it early, really. But we took 77 members of the high school band, got on planes and, and a couple different flights, got into Puerto Rico, stayed in La Haas in Dorado throughout the week. We saw the rainforest. We got to swim in the Bioluminescence Bay, which is an exciting thing. We got to do all kinds of these very uniquely Puerto Rican things. We toured some of the castles that were around there. Got to learn some of the history, some of the pirate history, of course, as well as some of what Puerto Rico is about politically, socio-economically, and all of these different things. The kids brought back amazing, amazing experiences in that regard. The performances were clearly the highlight. And they were joint performances with other schools, the first of which was with the Banda Escolar de Guayana. And we'll talk more about that in a second. And the second was sponsored by the University of Puerto Rico in Ponce, where both bands performed together. It was the, the first day that we were there, we arrived, and we knew this was going to happen, but, but we got to run rehearsals with their band. So I got to work with the brass of both schools. Mr. Schram got to work with the percussion of both schools. And then their director worked with the woodwinds from both of our schools. And so, again, it was the Banda Escolar, very well-renowned. They've marched the Rose Bowl Parade. And so we had this reputation already established, and we were able to, to work that through. The kids had wonderful experiences, are still in contact via Facebook and Twitter, going back and forth. There was a lot of love that was shared. And we weren't sure, because a lot, the first day, it was a little bit like a middle school dance. Like a lot of standing around, looking at each other, hands in pockets, and, I don't know. But with the day two, when we came together for the second performance, we're like, hey, how's it going? We're like, oh my gosh, they did talk. And then to have all this. One of the great things was, in the performance, we performed, their band performed five selections, we performed five selections, we performed two selections together. During that time, the mayor of Guayana was present, and pulled us up onto the stage and had a presentation. And we would now like to formally present this to both the, the school board, and to, of course, the city of Prior Lake Savage. And Justin will go ahead and read the proclamation now.
To recognize Prior Lake High School Marching Band as part of a musical exchange with our Banda Escolar de Guayana. Music is a vital part of our lives. And music study, performances, and appreciation are important to our social, cultural, historical, and educational development. And music plays an increasingly important role in our world today, is one of the most sublime of human pursuits, and is subscribed to by all races and creeds, is the language of all peoples, and the one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. Prior Lake High School Marching Band, dedicated to encouraging young musicians to increasing musical knowledge and to advancing American music, and its cooperating organizations join forces to direct attention to, to the dynamic influence of music in everyday living. And Banda Escolar de Guayana Puerto Rico celebrates the visit of Prior Lake High School Marching Band, working to create an understanding and appreciation for the value of music and creating a dynamic musical exchange of cultural environment. And I, Nelson J. Torres Yordan, Mayor of the City of Guayana, Puerto Rico, and the use of the powers that gives me the law of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico, do hereby proclaim the day of March 12th, 2016, to be as the day of the visit of Prior Lake High School Marching Band Minnesota in the City of Guayana, Puerto Rico, and ask all Guayanian citizens to observe and take part in activities recognizing the importance of music, musicians, and musical organizations to be cultured life of our city.
And our last Laker Pride I have with me is Hannah Ink. Hannah's also a senior and has received a very unique scholarship. We're going to, we're celebrating many of our students who have been or will receiving scholarships. But Hannah's is very unique, and actually, Mr. Lund is going to come up and share a little bit more about Hannah's scholarship, and we'll recognize and celebrate her.
Thank you. Anybody that knows Hannah, she's this unassuming, quiet, studious person. So I get, on April 19th, I get this email that says, hey, Mr. Lund, you're on tomorrow? I got free period such and such a time. I got exciting news. You know, I kind of flustered, so I call Hannah in the next day, and she presents to me, and we, we have tons of kids getting scholarships, but Hannah said, I got this AXA Community Volunteer Campaign Scholarship from. I said, well, great Hannah, that's great. And then she looked at me, she said, and I get $2,500, and because of my good works, the school gets a $2,500 grant to be used as, as it will. Now, in my 18 years as a principal, I have never had a student get a scholarship, and for their good works, the high, or the student get the scholarship, the high school also get a $2,500 grant. So I really wanted to publicly thank Hannah, and to let her know that $2,500 will be used to offset some, some experiences for students that don't need, that don't have the means. Plus, we use it for different field trips that we're using, some of our environmental field trips and everything that, that, you know, each year, we try to find money, they're valuable field trips, but we can't, you know, find it in the general budget. So the money will be put to good use for those that need, and to, to advance our theme of environmental education. So I really want to publicly congratulate Hannah for all she's done through all her years here, and for accomplishment that we get to share in also.
We're up to the open forum portion of our meeting. Do we have any members of the committee who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Personal items, Matt.
All right, first up this evening, I am recommending the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Chad, second, by Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero.
And one of the candidates that the board just approved was the person who will be stepping into our open Director of Special Education role. And I would like to invite Deb Anderson to come up and just say a couple of words quickly here. And I am very pleased to present Deb Anderson on, as the recommended candidate from the Hiring Committee. And a little bit about Deb, she's been serving as the Executive Director of Student Support Services for Minnetonka Public Schools. And we could not be more excited that she decided to join our team. So, thank you. Either way, any of the microphone available.
You'll get used to that spot.
Thank you so much. Thanks for inviting me to come this evening. I am so excited to be joining Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve in a district that is focused on innovation, 21st century learning, and just meeting and ensuring the needs of all of their students in the district to make, or to max out their potential. I'm really looking forward to starting in July, and the opportunity to meet all the staff and students. So thanks for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion to accept Deborah Anderson as the Director of Special Education Services? By Ben, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero, welcome. We'll move on to the retirements.
Yes, and this evening, we have one retirement to announce, and that is Darlene Mirror from Child Nutrition Services. She's been, most recently, at the high school, and has been with the district for 15 years of service. So a big thank you to Darlene. And this is just a good moment to, again, just remind the community that we will be having our annual District Retirement Celebration on Thursday, May 19th, and at Twin Oaks Middle School, from 3:30 to 5:30.
Do I have a motion to accept the retirement? By Dan, second?
Second.
By Chad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero.
And next, I present the following lease of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the lease of absences?
I'll make that motion.
By Rich, second. By Ben, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero.
Next up is a license staffing request for the 16-17 school year. And you can see that first, there's a number of positions in our Special Education Department that we're looking to add here. These positions are being requested due to the growth in our student population and the needs that those students have brought with them. And then, in addition to the four FTE that we have in the Board Packet for Special Education Staffing, there's also a .5 request for counseling services at Bridges ALC. You know, we've already experienced tremendous success with our ALC programming. This is another way to support those, those students, make sure that they're getting the supports that they need to be adequately prepared with their credit recovery. And then, this is also a position that will help work with our school-to-work program, making sure that we're managing those relationships and providing the best opportunities for our students in that regard as well. So with that, I make the request.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the candidates, actually, the approval of licensure staff?
So moved.
By Chad, second?
Second.
By Ben, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero.
And next, we do have an Educational Support Staff, Staffing Request. This is to move, we have two secretarial positions in our Activities Office. This is to move one of those positions from a 10-month secretary to an 11-month secretary. And this request comes, we are going to continue to monitor how to best service the programs and students that we have, that the Activities Office supports. And we believe that this will allow us to offer the kind of coverage in the office to best support students when they're coming back after the summer for captains practices, and also just making sure that there's a presence there all year. Because as we've talked about with all of our buildings and programs, it's, you know, the high school and the Activities Office is really a bustling place year-round. And so with that, I make the request with the caveat, we're going to continue to look at how we staff these positions to make sure that we've got it right.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the staff support position?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Chad, all those, any questions on that?
Yes, just to say, this is continuation, we've talked about it before, continuation of our emphasis on making year-round support in all the district schools.
Correct.
Any more questions? I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero.
And next up is a revised job description coming before the board. This is for our Network Systems Specialist. There's no real material changes here, just kind of some cosmetic changes, making sure that it really reflects the responsibilities in that position.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the amended job description?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Ben, all those, extra questions? Oh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
We'll move on to old business, the referendum update.
Good evening, board members. Director of Communications, Kristy Musman, and I would like to give a brief update on the recent referendum work that has been happening across the district. We have continued to take very seriously our obligation to share factual information with the community about the referendum. To date, we have completed about 35 community presentations, and you can see the list of presentations so far that we have done. We have shared process information, the ballot question and information about that, our referendum key points, and have answered questions from community members. We have presented, as you can see up there, to staff, parents, local government, civic organizations, both Prior Lake and Savage Chambers, and senior citizen groups. In addition to that, from the district level, we've used a wide variety of ways to communicate with our stakeholder groups, many of which are through existing communications that we use on a typical basis, including the district newsletter, Laker Connections, which is mailed out four times a year. Hopefully, you all got that in your mailbox. As well as fact sheets, and kind of a brief version of that fact sheet, we call it a bookmark, and posters in buildings, just to make sure that people know that the vote is coming up, May 24th. And we've kind of taken a layered approach to this, not only from the district level, but also site teams at the building level, so that parents are aware and they're communicating within their social circles and PTC groups. Principals have been communicating via newsletters and listservs, school events, and those kinds of things. And then finally, absentee voting has been going on since April 8th, as you know, and Martha's done a great job making sure she's up to speed on all of the particulars and election laws surrounding absentee voting. The hours are up there. We've had approximately 125 people vote so far, and the process has run really smoothly. We even have a ballot board that we're required to have, and Martha meets with them once a week to make sure that the applications and credentials match up, so that everything's on the up and up. So that's just a brief update for you on how things are going, and we'll just be continuing to use all those channels to communicate about our referendum coming up.
Any questions for?
Have you looked at the web traffic and have a count at all to see how much our district is accessing that information?
I have not, but that'll be very interesting, and I shall take a look at that.
If you could come back to, maybe after, at some time, let us know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to new business, we have a budget and staffing update. Actually, and Matt, I guess.
You've seen this several times already, and I keep updating it as we move forward in this school year. As always, we go through our strategic roadmap, enrollment projections, revenue assumptions, expenditure assumptions, and any other considerations we want the board to consider and discuss. And we, everything that we utilize for our budget is based on our core values that drive our words and actions, our partnership, our innovation, respect, stewardship, accountability, and our strive for excellence. I just want to update you on our enrollment. I do this at every board work session, board meeting. You can see what we budgeted this year was 7,824. Our October 1st enrollment was 7,905, and we are currently at 7,888. So from October 1, typically, you've heard this, me say this many times, we lose 70 students from October 1 through the end of the year. And we have this year have lost 17. And as, as we go through the year, it's been interesting. We see some students leave, but we are also gaining students as people are moving into the district. And so that's what, I believe, is keeping our enrollment high this year. Our enrollment assumptions, we do assume that we'll have an average increase of 250 students for 16 and 17, and kindergarten at 585 students. Currently, we have 538 students enrolled in kindergarten. Last year at this time, we had 520 students. We projected 525. We actually have 575 this year. For next year, we are projecting 585. I do believe we'll hit that number, and most likely, we'll exceed that number, just by what the enrollment is currently. For our revenue, we're assuming 2% to the basic formula. I do not think there's any money in the legislature this year to make any changes to that. Additional revenue that we'll receive due to growth for those 250 students, we're basing our budget on an enrollment of 8,150 students. We also are going to see, because of some additional money in special education, because they changed, once again, they changed how we are receiving our funding for special education. They've changed it so that we would receive them more currently. In the past, we received it from two years ago. Everything was based on information they had from two years prior. And so they've updated that, and so we kind of got a little bit of a bump for next year. I don't expect that we'll get this kind of an increase every year, but because they moved that forward so quickly over one additional year, we did see a, a large growth for special ed revenue, and we're expecting that. So our total overall revenue based on those facts are 3,800, For expenditures, current staffing, wages, and benefits, this number right now is an estimate. I will be updating it. I haven't updated it based on our health insurance increases, which we'll discuss a little bit later in the board meeting, which we, health insurance is going up. Transportation contract increase, our MNCAP's lease. Transportation contract increase, our MNCAPs lease, utilities and supplies, materials and furniture. And then we also have our ten teaching staff to meet our class size targets, which we approve every year, that's six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Two additional routes for transportation to handle the two hundred and fifty additional students we expect. The summer secretarial hours, elementary and activities, that's fifty-one thousand. Special education, which you just approved, about three hundred and sixty thousand. And one social worker, sixty-two five. Twenty additional days for an assessment coordinator, which we're assessing now that hasn't been brought forward to the board as of yet. And a point five professional development secretary, which has, also has not come to the board. So total expenditures, three point seven, three million seven hundred and forty-nine thousand nine seventy. On that, like I said, that number will adjust for health insurance as we move forward throughout the, this planning process. I'm not sure why I brought Matt up here. If you have questions about-
I can't even answer any questions.
Any questions? Seems like we see this at every meeting, so. Thank you. Matt can talk to us about that. And we have the medical and dental increase updates.
And next we're presenting the insurance committee's recommendations for our premium rate increases for our medical plan and our dental plan. And the committee, fully supported by Julie Sinkin and myself, is recommending a six percent increase in our medical benefit premiums and we are recommending that we keep our dental premiums flat. When it comes to the health insurance benefit and raising the rates there, that's always for a district like us that is self-insured, that's based off of the actual claims that were experienced in our plan last year. We take that and we look at the aggregate experience that metro school districts have and we also blend that with a three-year experience to project forward what we're going to need in order to maintain our fund balance. With a six percent increase, what that will allow us to do is it will allow us to maintain or hopefully add a little bit to the fund balance that we have for our medical plan. It is the insurance committee's goal to have a fifty percent fund balance, meaning that we have enough dollars in reserve to pay out half of the claims, fifty percent of the claims that we would expect to experience in a year. What that really allows us to do is it allows us to have some flexibility in a year when we really had increases well beyond what we would consider our normal trend, to ease that burden a little bit for the district and for our employees. So in a year, for instance, where we might need to see a twelve percent increase, that might allow us to slightly reduce the impact in a year like that. I know compared to some of the results that we've had recently, that six percent feels high. However, six percent is still beating trend amongst metro school districts and is certainly beating the approximately ten percent trend that's generally used by the insurance industry. And so although it's, we're not looking to experience a six percent increase every year, I did want to paint a little bit of a picture and put that in context for you. And so with that, we make the recommendation. Did you have anything you'd like to add, Julie? On dental? Yes, that would be a zero on the dental.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the insurance committee's recommendation for the increase in the flight dental?
So moved.
By Chad, second.
Second.
By Dan, any questions regarding this?
Matt, you said you're working toward a fifty percent fund balance. What will this increase put us at?
It really depends, we're always making our best guess right now. With this increase, we're hoping to get closer to thirty-five to thirty-eight percent. We've been as high as forty percent. The two things that we've been struggling with, that our plan has struggled with a little bit, has simply been, we're growing. And you, so you see the students coming in, we're also adding lives to our plan. And so that means that even if we have a perfectly normal health year and we're not seeing any increase over the previous year in claims, we're still seeing an increase to our base expenditure there. And then in addition to that, we've also seen some above average years in terms of claims trend in these last two years for us, so we've eaten into that just a little bit and we're looking to continue to get healthier. So we're hoping that'll push us up to about thirty-eight percent. And it's all about making slow gains, there's no reason that we need to make an aggressive push to get up to fifty percent in a year.
Okay. Any further questions? I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero. Mr. DeWu.
Good evening, Chair Sorenson, School Board, Dr. Stallow. You have in front of you a request for bids for high school roping projects? Project, possibly projects, depending on how the bids come in.
Okay. Do I have a motion to actually post the notice for bids for the high school? By Dan, second.
Second.
By Rich? All those, any questions regarding this? We, we had a study session about this.
It was presented to the facilities committee.
Facilities, yeah. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero, thanks.
Thank you.
Move on to the purchase order requests.
This is a normal request I bring forward every year to the school board. This is, gives us an opportunity, if the board were to approve it, for our staffs at our buildings to put together the purchase orders for the, for next year's expenditures. What they do is they request the purchase orders and they, we wouldn't pay them until after July first. So they're able to put them together, process them, order them with a stipulation that they wouldn't be delivered, nor would they be paid until after the first of July. And so it's, everything is in next year's budget. And this allows them to just have everything ready for next year as the teachers are leaving and getting everything for the end of the year, to make sure that everything is correct for what their needs are for next year.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen seventeen purchase order requests?
I'll make that motion.
By Rich?
I'll second.
By Chad, any questions in regards to this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries five zero. Need to set the Kansas dates for the March twenty-fourth election results. Martha's informed us that it needs to be three days after the election. I think we've talked about the twenty-seventh of May for that Friday at seven AM. Network, Chad? We, oh, we have that as a quorum, we just have to approve the, the results of the election, so just minimum of four, so. Okay. I'm sorry, you were supposed to present that. Did you have anything else?
You did a great, you did a great job, thank you. Did we set a time?
I think Julie was going to be at seven AM with donuts. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Coffee, too. Yes, I, we've got five here that are pretty definite and I don't think Stacy will be back that day. And I don't know, but Melissa will have to let her know, so.
Great, thank you.
Move on, policy, I see none listed. Administrative reports, so.
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight I'm going to highlight some of our collective work that has focused on this mission. Our big news since the last board meeting is that Glendale Elementary School has been selected as a two thousand sixteen U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School. Glendale now joins Redtail Ridge, Five Hocks and Jeffords Pond as Green Ribbon Awardees along with the district's Green Ribbon Sustainability Award. Across the country, a total of forty-seven schools, fifteen districts and eleven post-secondary institutions were honored for their innovative efforts to reduce environmental impact and utility costs, improve health and wellness and ensure effective sustainability education. So we're really excited for the staff and community at Glendale and for our district as a whole. In addition, Prior Lake High School has been named one of the Washington Post's two thousand and sixteen most challenging high schools. This is the fifth year that Prior Lake High School has been named to this list. High schools across the nation are ranked by an index formula that includes the number of advanced placement, international baccalaureate and advanced international certificates of education tests given at a school each year, divided by the number of seniors who graduate that year. The challenge index is designed to identify schools that have done the best job in persuading average students to take college-level courses and tests. And finally, this evening, members of the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce and Savage Chamber of Commerce joined district administrators and school board members for a ribbon cutting recently to officially celebrate the opening of the Lake House Cafe at Prior Lake High School. Tiny Footprints Coffee representatives were also on hand, sharing samples with students and attendees. It was a great way to partner with our business community and to celebrate the opening of the new coffee shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any legislative update? I, I don't know here about legislative update, I don't think there are.
No, we're still, still waiting, seeing lots of different options continuing to come through, but I think as Julie said, it doesn't look like a whole lot in terms of additional funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative reports? None? Board report, student council?
Yes.
How are you?
Okay, so I'm actually going to talk about prom. Student council is busy right now, too, but we just had prom and there's a lot of changes this year. So the class officers are actually the ones in charge of planning and fundraising for prom. I am a class officer as long, as well as, I think, five others, so all of us are girls, but we had a lot of fun. So last year, we saw that there was like, there was a need for a change in how the prom was run due to the continuous drop of numbers and people participating in prom and buying tickets. And also we heard a lot of complaints from other students. With this goal in mind, we began planning for prom our junior year and first we started to find a new location, so we went from Bloomington to Minnetonka to downtown several times and we ended up in Lakeville. But we were really happy because Brackets Crossing was kind of the answer to our nightmare of where to hold prom. And it was an extremely nice venue and great, like people to work with there. It held all of us, which was great. So this year, when our prom advisor was Mrs. Schaefer, but she had to leave unexpectedly and retire, so we had Mrs. Wright, one of our English teachers, step into the position and she did an amazing job. I can't brag enough about how great she is, she's the best, but we couldn't have done it without her. So we only had a few months to kind of throw this all together and we had two fundraisers, one at Culver's and one at the Point Restaurant in Prior Lake. We learned a lot from those fundraisers. So I think the next year's class officers will be set, which is a good way to look at it. And we were thankfully lucky enough to have great clubs in our school, like Yearbook and Student Council donate a lot of money to paying for prom expenses, so that helped. With this money, we were able to, for the first time, hire a party planning company and we hired All the Rage. They are a company based, out of Prior Lake and it is Stacy Garcia and Michelle Larscheid, who are the owners and runners of this and they both are, they have kids in Prior Lake and so they were, they've been trying to help us for years, so they were super excited and ready to decorate for everything. With this, oh, sorry. So hiring All the Rage was one of the best decisions we made because they were very helpful. The grand march, which usually takes quite a while, only took fifty-five minutes this year, so it was a record and we had a ton of people, so that was great. That just shows how, how much help they really did. Other changes we made this year included deciding not to hire the photographers that are at prom and we kind of just thought they were unnecessary, it's kind of cheesy to have those pictures and it was kind of pricey, too. So we dropped them and we decided to get a group photo booth, which was a lot cheaper and more fun. There was a line for that and people just loved it. The pictures were sent to people's phones, so it was like incorporating technology. That was pretty cool. And then we had a backdrop for people to take their own pictures and just like props, so just really cheap but fun changes. The other change, the big change, was not including dinner with the tickets. So groups got to decide if they wanted to have dinner wherever, they could do wherever they wanted, at their houses, if they wanted to go to a restaurant, but we did not have any part in what they wanted to do. So everybody got to choose what they wanted to do and then at Brackets Crossing, we had appetizers, desserts and beverages, like soda, so, yeah. But that was all the changes that we made that were really big. And so why we did all these changes, obviously we knew that students were frustrated with the dance before and the location, just kind of everything that was going in it, but we thought it was most important that everyone in our school has the opportunity to go to prom, no matter what their financial need is. And so our biggest accomplishment was getting prom tickets from, I think it was seventy-eight last year, a ticket?
Eighty-five this year.
Yeah, to forty-five dollars a person, so we were thrilled with that and ticket, or ticket sales were, I think, seven hundred, so we were, from last year was like five hundred, so we were very excited.
And Maddie, I made a mistake, I shouldn't address you as queen, Maddie, because I was there for coronation, so I, I appreciate it. It was a phenomenal job, I was at both the grand march and out at the prom for-
Yes, yeah.
For thirty minutes.
Yeah, it was the first year we had prom royalty court, so we had the teachers take part in that and they nominated ten students, girls and guys, and then the students voted from the nominees and that was a lot of fun. But the parents got to come to the dance, so.
And your partner, King Jamal.
Yes, Jamal Johnson, yes, yeah, so it was, it was pretty cool. And Danielle Sorenson, you're, it was on the court, too, but yeah, I just couldn't really get my grandma to leave, but.
There were a lot of parents who wouldn't leave.
Yeah, it was fun, though, and it was a success, so, yeah.
And it was respectful, I appreciate that the parents were invited. It showed how respectful the place was to, to you guys, to as you walked in the door, it was a very nice job and they did a phenomenal job, so.
But especially, again, thank you to Mrs. Wright, she made it all happen, for sure. Yeah. It all happens.
Do you have any questions about prom or? No. Move on, any internal board committee reports? Seeing none, we have future events, May nineteenth, we have the district retirement celebration at Twin Oaks. It's in the gym now, not the library, we changed from, it's in the gym? Twin Oaks Gym? In the lobby area now, okay. May nineteenth, from three-thirty to five-thirty. May twenty-third, we have the study session here at the DSC at six PM. And then the election, May twenty-fourth, if anyone can get out and vote, please. Polls are open from seven AM until eight PM. Absentee voting is here at the District Service Center, Monday through Friday, eight AM until three PM. And then Saturday, May twenty-first, from ten to three. And then Monday, the day before the election, from eight-